There we go, yes. Thanks Dave.
There we go.
Yes. Thanks.
There we go.
Are we getting feedback, are we getting feedback?
We are getting feedback. Do you want to stop for a minute and try to fix it?
About now.
Okay.
For some reason, for some reason, we were getting feedback from the live stream. Got it, so.
Right.
We're recording.
Okay.
We are recording, okay.
We're recording, okay, and we can trim that when we need to. Well, good evening everyone and welcome to In The City For Goods, forum for our Rochester Public School City, I mean, sorry, School Board candidates. Several weeks ago, we sent out invitations to all of the candidates and unfortunately, four have chosen not to participate, so we do only have four of our candidates. But we feel that it's very important, a part of our role as a community organization, is to get as much information to the public as possible. So we are continuing with the forum with those candidates who have agreed to join us. We do have, we are doing this live stream, people can watch it on Facebook. We also are recording it for later, putting it on our page. But for you who are right here in the room now, thank you very much for joining us. We do have a plan for our, our process, we've used this process over the years. We have sent the questions in advance to our school board members or candidates. I apologize, Justin and Pierce did not get them, so we'll have to see. He, he has not had quite as much warning, let's say. But we will be having one minute for each of the candidates to give an introduction, who they are, a little bit about them. And then we will proceed to our questions which have been generated by, we had put a request out for those who are on our mailing list and we also had this request on our Facebook page for sure to be received. These were then sent to our candidates after looking and removing duplications and shortening a couple of them. And then we will have one minute for each of the candidates to be able to answer each question. And then at the very end, we will have another time, one minute for each candidate to summarize what they would like to cover and to give us the reasons why they would like us to vote for them. If you were not able to send a question and you still have a question, you may send it now to our email, which is all one word, inthecityforgood@gmail.com. We will look at those and see depending on what we have for time and if they have not duplicated what we've already covered, we may, we may be able to have a couple of those answered as well. So for now, we're going to start, we use a random number generator so that the questions are in different order for the candidates at each time. So what I'll do is I will let the candidates know at the beginning, what order they'll be answering in, and then we will proceed with that. So for first of all, we are going to be again, having each of the candidates have an introduction, oh, and I should point out, we do have a timekeeper who will be saying time or something similar so that we can, if, if you've reached the timeframe that we've allotted. So to begin with, what we'd like to have you do is in the order that I'm going to ask you now, I'm going to have first of all, Justin, followed by Jean, followed by Kathy, followed by Julie. So we will begin by introducing yourselves, tell us a little bit about why you're running or what you would like to say in this first minute. So Justin, if you would like to start.
Yes, absolutely. Well, thank you for providing this opportunity to talk a little bit about the future of our schools and our community. My name is Justin Cook, I'm running for position two on the Rochester School Board. I have four kids attending Rochester Public Schools. I have a kindergartner, a second grader, and a fifth grader at Jefferson, and a seventh grader at Kellogg. And if for no other reason than that, I care an awful lot about our schools and about their future. And I, I think that there's opportunities to improve. I think we have a solid foundation, but there's things that we can do better in Rochester. I think we have some challenges coming up. And I'd like to lend my perspective and my passion to try to help us navigate these next chapters. I'm an intellectual property attorney by training and have lived in Rochester about five years where I work remotely for the Nielsen Company based in New York. And looking forward to the discussion, thanks.
Thank you. I am.
Okay, that's good, you're just on time, very good, you've been practicing. Okay, next we have Jean, did I say, I'm already, yes.
Well, let me begin by saying, Justin, I'm impressed that you had that time to the second, that was brilliant. I'm Jean Marvin, a longtime educator in Rochester Public Schools. I taught at four of our secondary schools during the years that I was a teacher. Three grown children, all of whom are RPS grads, and six grandchildren who are currently in Rochester Public Schools, elementary, middle school, and high schools. This is my eighth year as a school board member and I am really hoping that I continue serving this community and serving our kids on the school board. I, I think providing children with a good education is one of the most important gifts that a community can give its children. It's about the promise, it's the promise that we give them, that we will stay with them, that we will believe in them. And right now, I think that there is a huge nationwide challenge about what education should be and who it should be for. I, I hope I have the opportunity to continue working for our kids, for our parents, and for our schools, for seat number five on the school board.
I am.
That was close too, okay.
That was pretty good, yeah.
That's right, Kathy.
So my name is Kathy Nathan and I'm running for seat six on the school board for reelection, amending my first term. We've been in Rochester since 2000 and graduated, my husband and Mark and I graduated two sons from Rochester Public Schools, one who's graduated from college and one who is a senior. I spent most of their school years as a parent volunteer and a parent advocate. I was that parent in the audience at school board meetings for about 10 years, trying to bring a parent and family perspective to the deliberations and decisions of the school board. And it just became time for me to bring my experience as a volunteer and advocate to a position on the school board in one election in 2018. I agree. This is an important time for education. And I think this election is one of the most critical in Rochester's history. We need to elect leaders who listen to our students and listen to our educators and listen to our families. I think we've done that in the past year. We're on a path with a plan that is really going to accelerate student success.
I am.
And I'm hoping to be reelected, thank you.
Thank you, okay, and Julie.
Good evening, thank you for hosting this opportunity to speak with the community of Rochester. My name is Julie Workman and I first moved here in 1974 for a one-year teaching position and I retired from that position in 2010, at which point I immediately ran for the school board and I've been on the school board ever since. So I think part of what keeps me going is our students. Our students are so important for how our nation is going to move forward. It's important to them personally in terms of what they can achieve and learn to become their best selves. So as we move forward, I'm going to continue focusing my energy on communicating the progress and the priorities and initiatives of the strategic plan. It's a really important document that we've worked on for eight months, which has involved community members, some staff members, school board members. It's been a real community effort.
Okay, alright, thank you. Now, our first question then, beyond this, is how, or have you ever spent time in a classroom as a teacher, a teacher's aide, or some other similar school setting, coaching kids or whatever, prior to running for the school board? I must say that question initially was in the format of have you ever spent time in a classroom? And I would hope we all have those, and as students, and I suddenly realized that, okay, I think we need more than just being a kid. So in this question, Julie will go first, Kathy, Justin, and Jean. And again, a question, have you ever spent time as a teacher, aide, coach, in similar ways in a class, in a school, prior to running for school board? And how did that help you?
Well, I'm really glad you clarified what time spent in a classroom meant because I was mentally trying to add up all my years of, you know, education in the public schools and college and everything I've done since. So, but as I said in my opening statement, I was an orchestra teacher in the Rochester Public Schools for 36 years. So that's been my experience that I bring to, have brought to the board as a teacher. Obviously, I'm quite a bit past that now with the 12 years since I retired. But I've continued to keep contact with teachers, parents, community members, and former students who are now almost as old as I am.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Whoops, okay, Kathy.
So as I mentioned, I volunteered as a parent, my, my children's classes are for 19 years, almost weekly, and I let teachers put me to work. And the relationship I was able to build with teachers really helped me to understand not only my own child's education and what they needed, but what all children needed. Because it wasn't just of interest to me for my child to be successful, I wanted to make sure that all children are successful so that my kids could grow up and be in a community of peers that could really change the world. I also served as a mentor for two high school clubs at Century, the Century STEM Society and the Century Honor Society. And this was just in the past, past few years, past 10 years. So I've been able to connect with our young people and really hear how much they care about their education, they care about their schools, and the great ideas they have to make them better. So that opens my ears as a school board member to really listening to what our young people have to say about what our schools should be doing for them.
Thank you, and Justin?
Well, before I had kids of my own, and actually while I, starting while I was in law school, I spent five years mentoring a middle school student and into, into high school and starting in the middle school years, one-to-one, one time per week, about an hour a week. And that long-term relationship-building mentoring experience was really important, certainly for me and I think for him as well. And then I guess since I've had my own kids, I've coached soccer and baseball teams, feels like more than I haven't. And I've been a Strive mentor the last couple of years at Century. And then, you know, volunteered in my kids' classroom, just a little bit here and there. Of course, the last couple of years haven't been the best for that, but yeah, I, I really think a lot of mentoring programs and especially long-term mentoring programs, great for the kids, but also really, really great for the community.
One quick question, what is the Strive program? Could you describe that for those that are not familiar with it?
Sure, it's, it's kind of organized by the Rotary Club and it's a, in all four of the public high schools, students that are potentially at risk of not graduating on time that are identified by, by the school counselors are asked to participate in a weekly mentoring, or actually, it's, yeah, it's weekly mentoring program. And then the Rotary recruits volunteers to, you know, complete a background check and get a little bit of introduction on what they could bring in terms of their, you know, presence as a caring adult and, and a little bit in the way of their experience to share with those students.
Okay, good, thank you, I appreciate that, and Jean.
Thank you, I've spent more time in the classroom than outside of it. Forty years as an English teacher in Rochester. And I've spent about 15 years teaching teachers for Augsburg. Both experiences have been wonderful, I, I think it's critically important to have that experience with kids because you come to realize very quickly, we have an amazing, wonderful diversity of students who think differently, learn differently, they come from different places, they process things differently. And that's part of the strength of our school system. For the last several years, I've also been the advisor for our district's student school board, where I meet with kids from every secondary school. And they advise the superintendent and the school board about what, what, they let us know what they think we need to know. I've also been fortunate enough to be able to be invited to elementary schools to interact with little kids, mainly reading to them. I love it.
Thank you. So now, the next question is one that I think is important for all of us to understand. And this is, what is the role of the school board in relationship to the school administration? Because this is something that, again, is part of what do you see as your role as a candidate and a potential or current school board member? How do you interact and what is your role in advising or being part of administering our schools? This one Kathy will begin, then Jean, then Julie, then Justin, so Kathy?
Well, if you're defining school administration as the day-to-day operations of the buildings, the board should not be involved in that. Our most important role is to create and review district policies that provide the, the guidelines for the operation and the administration of our schools. And it makes sure that we're in compliance with federal and state laws and that we're using best practices in education. We have one employee, which is the superintendent, and that superintendent is responsible for implementing the policies and overseeing the rest of the employees of the school district, including our school administrators.
Okay, was, was that the time? I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear, so, okay.
No, actually, they're doing, did we tell them to do one minute if they would like? They're still basically doing 45.
We're, we're doing one minute.
Okay, so you've got a little longer time.
Well Kathy, you've got a little time.
A little more time. So, so we gave, we lay the guidelines for school administration and the superintendent implements that. And what's great about our superintendent and our school board is that we have a great back-and-forth relationship. So he brings a lot of pieces of information to us for advice and consent as well as formal approval at the school board.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Ray. We, we need a timekeeper, I, I did one of these without a timekeeper and tried to do it myself and did not do it to get a job, so thanks a lot, I appreciate it. Jean?
As Kathy just said, I think some people misunderstand what school boards can and what they cannot do. And we do not run the schools. Now, we do listen when we are contacted by parents, students, or staff. We provide that information to the superintendent or we get folks connected with the administrator who can best provide them with the answer or help them problem solve. It's tempting sometimes to hear something and want to swoop in and just make changes, but no school boards have the authority to do that. When big issues come up, and as Ms. Nathan said, when there are policy issues, we absolutely are involved in those. And, and make no mistake, we're involved with the issues surrounding our schools. It's just we are not the ones who go into the schools and tell people what they can do or what they can't do.
Thank you, I'm.
You're good, and Julie?
Yeah, Kathy and Jean have said everything so well, but I'll try and, and go maybe in a little bit different direction. But just to reiterate what they have said is that the school board is a governing board. We are the what. And the superintendent is the how. And the superintendent then directs administrators who direct teachers to implement the policies and some of those decision-making things that we don't deal with directly. Too many times, you know, we'll get a, a call from a parent wanting us to fix something right now and we're not the fixers, but we do direct them to the person who can help them with answering their questions. So we review the policies, as Kathy said, we have to make sure that our policies are lined up with the state statute, that they are legal. We run new policies through our legal counsel first before launching them. We have MSBA model policies that we use as a guide and they do perform the bulk of our, of our policies. And the other thing is that we also are responsible for the budget, for approving the budget.
Great, thank you, and finally, and Justin? Would you like me to repeat the question, with the role of the board in relationship to school administration? Justin? Are you hearing me?
I'm trying to, but I've, I've lost all audio.
Oh, okay.
Joining me again.
If you would like, you want, we can come back to you and we will come, it looks like we've lost Justin for a minute. We'll come back to him with an answer for that question when he's able to get his, his system set up right. So meanwhile, the next question is, should candidates have prepared themselves by attending meetings prior to running for the school board? And for this one, Kathy will be first, then Julie, then Jean will have you go ahead and then Justin, and hopefully he'll be able to join us soon. So Kathy, did candidates prepare themselves? By preparing?
At a minimum, yes. We've made our meetings available in person or online via YouTube. All of our agenda and supporting documentation related to all of our decision-making is available online. And I'm happy to answer any questions about those materials always or find somebody who can. And I hope that anybody who wants to be a school board member would avail themselves of all of this public information. But I'm disappointed to say, I personally haven't received any questions or, or clarification requests from my opponent or anyone else on the slate. And I'm concerned about the misinformation that they're putting out there about how we manage our budget deficit this year, about teaching CRT in the schools, our strategies for improving student outcomes, and our gender-neutral bathrooms. They have a clear confusion about the difference between equity and equality. And I think we'd be having a more robust discussion in this community about what our schools need to be successful if they had been better prepared.
Okay.
I am.
Thank you, and Julie?
I think it really is important for school board candidates to actually attend the meetings because it's just, it's important to actually be there so that they can see everything. Just building a little bit on what Kathy had to say, I'm, I've been very disappointed that so many of our school board candidates, present company excluded, have not even stayed for the entire meeting, it's very rare. They will often leave immediately after the public comment happens. And this is the time when we really get to the meat of what our work is in terms of making decisions that impact everyone, not just the kids, but also the community. Having some of those really in-depth study sessions that we have, we're having one next Tuesday, as a matter of fact. Have they, you know, they should be talking to former school board members or current school board members. Going to School Board Academy is also another way that they can get a 30,000-foot view of the district. And understanding the roles and responsibilities of school board members, which we touched on in the previous question, I think is really essential. Because it really can be a shock when you come on the school board and you promise you're going to do all of these things and you discover that indeed they are not your responsibility.
Okay, thank you, and Jean?
Yeah, I can't imagine running for any office without having a very clear understanding about exactly what that office involved, what the responsibilities are. Where is the line that tells you you've gone too far? And, and you know, as both previous speakers have said, there's some real misinformation out there, lack of understanding about not only what school boards do, but also what this school district is doing. And it's easy to get that information. There are certain, been certain suggestions about things that the school board should do. Well, there are also laws, Minnesota statutes, that say, no, you can't do that. There is guidance by the Minnesota Department of Education about what we can and can't do. And moreover, I think it's really important that any candidate for school board has at least a basic understanding of what education, what teaching and learning involves. It's more than reading, writing, and arithmetic. If we're going to prepare kids for the world outside of school, everyone who's involved in our education system has to understand that just teaching those basics is not enough.
I am.
Justin, you are back with us, I hope that we were able to hear you. So we had, we were in the middle of the question about the role of the board in relationship to school administration. If you'd like to, to go back to that question, then I will come back to the question that we were just answering. But Justin, are you able to hear me? Looks like we still have, are you, are you able to hear us? No? So. Well. We're going, it looks like Justin is not able to pick up our audio right now. So I'm going to move to the next question and we may give him a little bit of time when we get things fixed so that he can go back and work on some of these other questions. So our next question is, do you think national politics contribute positively or negatively to local school boards? And in what ways would you say this contribution is occurring? This is in order of Julie, and I'm going to skip Justin again, Jean and Kathy. And we'll come back to Justin when we can. So Julie, do you think national politics contribute positively or negatively to local school boards and in what ways?
Yes, they can do both, but I think these last few years have been extraordinarily challenging. Navigating distance learning and masks and COVID and vaccines and all of that. But I think more importantly, we have seen the deterioration of civility and a national push with false information. Simply making up stuff that's not happening. You know, things mysteriously appear at the same time in Montana, Minnesota, Maryland, and Minnesota. All these things are happening at the same time, but they actually aren't. It's really important to know what this district is experiencing, what we are addressing, which are not the issues that have been the, the red flag issues are the ones that have been used to incite fear and distrust in our school district. Rochester is not everybody else, and.
Okay, you know, when you hear the word time, or the timekeeper, you can finish your sentence, okay? And then, and then we won't move on to another sentence, so did you have, did you want to finish?
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, we have to understand what Rochester is all about and what's happening here and to be able to support that with facts and evidence, and that simply is not happening.
Okay, thank you, and then Jean?
Yeah, unfortunately, politics are, are being brought into our education system or into campaigns for school board. Schools are being used as, and students, school districts are being used as battlegrounds, I think, for broader issues. And I think, I think mainly it's about folks who don't want to accept that our nation is changing, that we are becoming more diverse. And there are those who not only won't accept, they won't embrace it, but they won't even accept it. Kids are not the same as they were 30 years ago, families are not the same. Change is inevitable, and I think most of the changes we're seeing is really, they're really positive. But our, our, across the nation, it's the same script that's being used by candidates who may not be familiar with what their school district is doing and what the laws in their state are. They're using our schools as political fodder for something worse, bigger.
Okay, and Kathy?
So, my answer is negatively. Anti-public school politicians have been working for decades to try to divert public money into private and religious schools. But it, it, as my colleagues have said, it's really intensified over the past two years, led by Christopher Rufo and the other far-right political activists who were intentionally weaponizing the words "critical race theory" just to try to get school districts to. just to try to get school districts to stop doing the important work of diversity and equity and inclusion. And if that wasn't enough, now Christopher Rufo and his allies are using sexual orientation and gender identity to demonize our, some of our most vulnerable students and, and trying to stoke fear and bolster their own regressive policies. And that's why the school board election is really important because the Rochester School Board is the last line of defense against these national and even state-level policies and politicians who are looking to bring that to our schools.
Okay, thank you. So Justin, I believe you are now joining us by phone?
Yeah, I.
Yeah. So, okay.
I'm coming through.
All right, we can, we can hear you. So I'm going to give you an opportunity now to kind of backtrack. These technical issues are always so frustrating. So we were, first of all, the role of the board in relationship to school administration. If you'd like to share your thoughts on that question first?
Well, the, the board provides the strategic direction and sets the priorities for the, the district and relies on the superintendent and the rest of the administration to implement those priorities and those directives. But there's also, I think from the board, there's a role to play in setting the I have a strange echo coming into my ear, so I'm just going to take that out while I talk. In, in determining what the priorities are going to be and kind of setting the, the tone for the, for the entire district to some extent and and collaborating with the superintendent to identify the the areas of opportunity.
Okay. And then one of the questions that when you were working on trying to get connected and hearing us, should candidates have prepared themselves by attending meetings prior to running? And so Justin, I'm just going to give you these, right, one after the other, okay?
Yeah, I think you know, serving on the school board, I, I think it's a terrific opportunity and I'm looking forward to it, but I, I think I'm also realistic that it's a pretty tremendous undertaking and there's a there's a lot of factors that go into running a school district. The finances alone are fairly complex, certainly much more complicated than a household budget. And it takes a while to get up to speed on all the different puts and takes and the different stakeholders. So certainly attending meetings is one way to do that. And it, it is one way to get up to speed on all those different considerations and seems like a good idea to me.
Okay. And then the next question that we were just finishing is, do you think that national politics have contributed positively or negatively to local school boards and in what ways?
You know, I think anybody that's been paying attention has kind of seen this play out right here in Rochester over at least the last couple of years. And negatively, because the from what I've observed, it, it seems as though there's a a very deliberate effort to inject some messaging into these down-ballot races, these local election contests to try to get some messaging surfaced that that I, you know, the culture war strategists think would be advantageous to have on the top of minds of people when they're thinking about other elections. And so the, the thing that I, I am bothered by more than anything is who benefits from all this stuff? It's certainly not our students. It's not our communities. It's not the future state of Rochester. Because the only game in town that can really lift up all of those, all of the students and, and bring our community along is the Rochester Public Schools. And so I, I do think it's pretty damaging.
Thank you. And our next question has to do with the placement of the new schools. Placement of new schools still seem to be aligned with areas of the city based on income and particularly of areas that lack diversity. What might you suggest is a way to increase diversity in our schools? And our, we will be going in the order of Julie, Kathy, Jean, and Justin. So Julie?
Well, first of all, I think the question says seem to be aligned with the areas. And I think this is really a misunderstanding of the process that we used when we, we drew our boundaries. And when we talk about balancing diversity, we have to realize that approximately 46% of our students are minority students. So we already have a lot of diversity in our school district. So adjusting boundaries is to help overcrowding. But we have to make sure that we don't have racially isolated schools, which is what Minnesota says we can't do. Other factors in the placement of new schools are transportation costs. In past years, we've kind of tweaked the boundaries, but this, this school year, it's been really big, of course, because we've been opening two brand-new school sites, Overland Elementary and Dakota Middle School. So this has really impacted how we have had to shuffle our boundaries. But we didn't do it by ourselves. We had lots and lots and lots of input from the community, from parents, from students on their thoughts as to how we might best achieve this. So that's one of the things that this board does extremely well, I think, is to seek out information from the community so that we are basing our decisions, not just on what we personally might have to feel, but also on what do they think? What do they want?
Thank you. Kathy?
So thank you to my colleague for doing such a great job of describing the background about how, how we got to where we are today.
Colley.
I'm sorry, what was that? Ray, did you have a concern?
No, I'm sorry. Disregard that.
Okay. All right. Okay, Kathy.
And, and I think that the great, the great first answer to this question is that we have great diversity in our schools. Most of our schools fall before, between 40 and 60% minority students. So I think the better question is, how do we celebrate that diversity? How do we use that diversity to benefit all of our students? We have to capitalize on it. That's why the Strategic Plan Initiative of the Student Center Deeper Learning is so important. Because part of that is bringing culturally relevant curriculum and culturally responsive teaching and learning to all of our classrooms. That helps students who are from diverse communities see themselves in the curriculum, connect with the curriculum, be engaged with the curriculum. And it helps all the students have a window into the diversity, not only of their classmates, but of the broader world. And I think that's the best thing we can do to prepare them to go out into this world that is so diverse and be ready to deal with whatever challenges face them.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to repeat the questions. It's just long. And so again, for the last two candidates to be able to hear it again. The placement of new schools still seem to be aligned with areas of the city based on income and particularly of areas that lack diversity. What might you suggest is a way to increase diversity in our schools? So Jean?
Yep. And that's a really good question. And it's one of the most important and frustrating issues we dealt with in recent years. To be clear, only two of our four new schools did we have to find land for. The other two were just rebuilt where they sat. One of them was not built in the place that this school district really wanted to get. That was an issue with the city. However, it was also interesting during the process of determining where schools should be. There is a law that you cannot use racial demographics as a variable. So you can't, you can't say it's this percentage of Asians, blacks, Caucasians, whatever. You can't do that. You can, you can look at socioeconomic status. We know that all kids do better when they are in schools and in classrooms that are very diverse. All of them do better. And it's going to be an ongoing challenge to determine how we do that. I think as Ms. Nathan said, it, we should absolutely be able to guarantee that no matter where any student attends school, there will be teachers and there will be curriculum waiting for them that reflect who they are, where they come from. That's going to be critically important. But as we move forward, we can't tell people who are coming into Rochester where they can live, where they can build. So I think this is going to be a challenge that's going to continue, and it's one that we have to continue to address.
Thank you. And Justin?
Yeah, I guess I, I just echo that diversity in our schools is extremely important. I, I think it's sort of a moral imperative to ensure that that's achieved, but it's also a strategic value for the district. I, I mean, for looking at this as a parent and thinking about my kids, I recognize that we live in a globalized, diversified, knowledge-based economy. And for my kids and all their friends and all the current students in Rochester Public Schools, to a large degree, their ability to drive the value in the globalized supply chains and be at the the crux of technology and artificial intelligence and all the latest and greatest is going to rely on their ability to be competent cultural navigators and to be, to have facility and diverse work groups. And so I do recognize that that's important. I, I think it's less an issue of where to place new schools, which is largely going to be driven by continued population growth and just sort of necessarily, that's largely, not entirely, but largely going to be on the periphery of the city where land is available and where the new community, new neighborhoods are being constructed. But also requires looking carefully at some of our schools that are less
Time please.
Than others.
Okay, great. Thank you. Now, with affordable housing crisis, who we've been talking about housing where houses are going to be built, what is the district doing to support those students who are homeless, couch surfing, et cetera? And how can the community help the schools in doing this? This will be in the order of Kathy, Justin, Julie, and then Jean. So Kathy, again, affordable housing crisis. So how are we helping homeless, couch surfing, and students dealing in the same way? And how can the community work with the schools to help?
Well, we track about 400 to 500 students every year who experience homelessness. And federal law requires our district to provide services to these students. So we have a specific school board policy that spells out those requirements. And it allows students to attend the same school even if their, if their housing situation changes and to provide them transportation to that school. And we have a full-time staff member who's the point person who reaches out to students experiencing homelessness. And we also connect our social workers in our schools. I think one of the biggest ways community members can help in the near term is almost every school has either a community room or a resource room where they make clothing, food, washers and dryers available to all students. But that's particularly important to our students experiencing homelessness, to have this resource room to be able to access some of those resources. Each school publishes information about what they need. The district publishes it, and I publish it on my personal Facebook page. So that's one immediate way that people can, can give to, to help with the resources that our homeless students need.
Thank you. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm going to get a drink of water while Julie is answering this question.
Great. I think Kathy covered it really thoroughly. Keeping them at the same school is really critical. And it's not just important for our students who are homeless, but we have students who change address sometimes as many, as often as every single month. And so if they are moving from one school to the next, to the next, every single month, they could be going to eight or nine different schools during the course of the school year. So we do make a huge effort to keep them at their same school so they will have that sense of stability and caring and continuity. Kathy touched on all of the things related to policy. I'd like to talk a little bit more about our community schools, which have been very helpful to our students. Once again, not those who, just those who are homeless, but those who also have the same kinds of needs. Some of our, our community schools are John Marshall, Gage. Oh, I know I'm going to forget them all. So I'll stick with just those two to start with. And community members can donate clothing and food to these, to these rooms. And we do have a full-time onsite coordinator for each of these community resource rooms. In addition, we have school psychologists who are ready to help, social workers, mental health practitioners.
Okay. And, and again, you can finish your sentence if you need to. And then Justin? I'm sorry. Sorry. Yes, Jean?
Oh.
Good day. When I stepped away, I may have mixed things up a bit. I'm sorry.
Well, there are three of us with J names, so that's confusing too. You know, part of what we are trying to do as a school district is to take the stigma away from kids who don't have permanent housing. So we refer to them as students in transition or students experiencing homelessness because we want their expectation to be that this is the situation now. It's not forever, and it's not who they are. You know, as Kathy said, we have a full-time staff person who works with kids who are experiencing homelessness. We have a community education and partnership department that works with the community to ensure that as many of our kids as possible is getting what they need. And this includes, do they have someplace to go after school? Do they have food for weekends? Again, is there a place that, that they can get homework help, that they can get clothing?
Time please, Jean.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And Justin?
Sure. So yeah, I, I think that the, the previous answers have, have covered the policies pretty well, but you know, I, I just underscore that we all have a vested interest in the success of these students in transition. There's so much, and this gets back to your earlier question about the influence of national politics, but there's, there's so little compassion sometimes and a tendency to see certain groups of students as them rather than us. And you know, I, I just, I just invite everyone to to see these students that are in transition as the future leaders of Rochester, the future entrepreneurs, the contributors to our civics and our culture. And we all win when we're able to capture their potential and, and unleash their potential by, by meeting their needs so that they're able to be successful.
Thank you.
Time please.
Okay. What specific steps would you advocate to increase graduation rates and reading and math scores? Jean, you get this question first, then Kathy, then Julie, then Justin?
Well, and Justin is the, absolutely the torchbearer for reading by third grade. And I think that the, which has a direct impact on graduation rates, that the switch we've gone to, to teaching the science of reading is hugely important. Interestingly, or maybe, and not surprisingly, we need more kids who get pre-K. We need universal pre-K because kids who come to kindergarten without understanding language, numbers, you know, some sort of basic skills that you need for learning, it's very difficult for them to catch up and to graduate on time. We need additional, I think, special support for middle school and high school students in reading and in math. We need our, more and more students to be involved in post-secondary programs while they're in high school. Because then right then, they can, they can see, I just need to graduate from high school because there's a future for me. I've got a job waiting for me. So I think those are some of the things that we need to do.
Thank you. And, excuse me, Kathy?
Well, I think improving those measures of academic success is job one in our strategic plan. And the board approved the strategic plan unanimously in June. And as I mentioned, we're already in the process of implementing it. And the components of Student Center Deeper Learning are multi-tiered systems of support. And our students developing plans for school and post-secondary are all contributors to that academic success. But I'm particularly excited about the School Continuous Improvement Plan. But I'm particularly excited about the school continuous improvement plans. Each school has created goals around improving student academic academic knowledge and skills based on the data analysis of the students in their schools. And last Tuesday, we had a great presentation at the school board by the principal and staff of Elton Hills, where they laid out exactly what they were going to do to improve reading scores this year. And I encourage everybody to look at that presentation and to see the upcoming presentations, because we'll be having middle schools and high schools and other elementary schools each presenting their own skip. So you will be able to see school by school where the focus is on improving those academic outcomes and those graduation rates. And I think that's one of the most exciting pieces of our strategic plan for getting our kids academic achievement up.
Great, thank you. And Justin? Oh, I'm sorry, Julie, I skipped you. I'm sorry. I told you we'd be next.
It was it was that other J person, I guess. So I think I I really like the school continuous improvement plan, because every school is different. We're not not every school is the same. So what might be a focus at Elton Hills might not be a focus at Sunset Terrace or Bamber Valley or Ben Franklin. So each school is able to tailor the needs of their students and the plans that they will develop to help them be successful. One of the things I think that we've really spent a lot of time focusing on are the MCAs, which really are not particularly helpful to teachers. It's just a snapshot at the end of the year. Those scores don't come back to August, and then September rolls around and it's entirely new, a new batch of students who come in. So one of the things we're doing this year is called FastBridge, which allows the teachers to evaluate the kids as they're moving along, so that they have a real idea of where are my students right now? What do I have to do in order to help them get better? So you know, taking a test without really defining exactly what the problem is doesn't allow us to improve on it. But with the FastBridge, the teacher knows, the student knows, the parents know, and then everybody can work together to help the student become successful in achieving these very critical academic outcomes that are outlined in the strategic plan.
Thank you. And Justin?
So October is actually Dyslexia Awareness Month. And one of the one of the things that's become clear, both from the the science of reading and and otherwise, just in the past couple of decades, is that the type of instruction that students with characteristics of dyslexia benefit from in order to learn how to read in early elementary grades, structured literacy that is explicit, sequential, and comprehensive, and and focuses first on phonemic awareness and manipulation. That type of instruction is actually better for all students, because it it allows students to learn how to decode language rather than memorize, among other things. And so I I think that that's absolutely the right direction for the district to be going in, and I can promise that I will be intensely focused on our progress and in keeping the district accountable to realizing the potential of deploying the science of reading throughout the district.
Time please.
Thank you. Our next question also deals with an area of academics, and this question is, do schools have a part in teaching social studies that includes the bad with the good? Jean, you will lead off with this question, then Kathy, then Julie, then Justin.
And the answer is absolutely yes. I think this is one of those areas where districts nationwide are being accused of indoctrinating kids. To be awake, to to have a future, to be a leader, you need to have the facts in an age-appropriate way. Our nation, this democracy, was founded on an incredible idea of equality for everybody, of everybody gets a chance. We have not always met that. And the the thing that I find astonishing is that people say, well, you you need to whitewash history. Just tell kids about the good things that we've done and kind of gloss over the other things. Kids aren't stupid. I mean, you show a, I showed a six-year-old grandson, you know, a picture of all the past presidents of the United States, and he said, why aren't there any girls? And he looked some more and he said, why weren't there any black or brown people until this guy, Barack Obama? They get that. And
You can finish, okay, all right. Again, you're you're allowed to finish your sentence, but thank you. Kathy?
So I don't think it's about bad versus good. I think it's about being honest. I I keep saying we have to teach honest history, and in in that teaching, we have to value the culture and the identities and the lived experience of all of our students, because they're gonna lead the future. They need to know the mistakes of the past so that they don't repeat them again. And they don't want to, like Jean said, they know. I also am a fan of social studies, because I have my master's degree in public policy, and I recognize the skills that they teach in social studies like civics and economics and critical thinking and policy and advocacy. Because those are the skills that will go with it with the honest history knowledge that will make them better leaders of tomorrow. I always say, I'm not gonna be around much longer, but I'm not gonna be around when my kids are gonna be my age and in charge of the world, and I want them to be fully prepared with everything they need, and I think that's where social studies comes in.
Thank you. That was good timing. All right, and Julie?
Yeah, I honest history is really important, but I don't understand why people would not want to teach the bad along with the good. And I'll give you an example. When I was teaching orchestra, I would ask a student to evaluate their performance. It sucked. And I said, how? That's not useful. Let's identify what is the problem? How do we solve it? How do we prevent that from happening again? But at the same time, also telling them all the good things that we are doing. My students once asked me about ten years into my high school career, don't we ever do anything right? And I'd been so focused on fixing the things that they needed improvement on, that I forgot to tell them what they were doing right. So that honesty is really, really, really critical, but we have to be specific. What is it in our history that didn't work? What is it in our history that we don't want to repeat? Do we really want to replicate Nazi Germany again? I don't think so. But in order to not do that, we have to understand what happened in the past, why it happened, and how do we move forward?
Time, thank you.
Thank you. And Justin?
Yeah, I I guess I just think it's wild that we live in a time when teaching facts in school has such an organized and motivated opposition. But this is where we are. And certainly, I think that that history, that the stories that we tell about ourselves, about the world, and about our country should be grounded in facts, because when you teach kids facts, the critical thinking skills follow, because they're they're incredibly bright and they're inquisitive, and they wanna know why the world is the way it is. And it's not especially helpful to develop critical thinking skills to repeat the stories about founding fathers that may or may not have been true. But you know, the reality is that our country was built on the backs of the founding fathers that signed the Declaration of Independence, at least as much as it was built on the or by the enslaved people and by the people that didn't have the right to vote, by the people that have joined up with this democracy over decades. And this notion that certain groups of students are only able to identify or or have affinity for
Yeah, okay, okay, go, can you finish the sentence quickly?
I I just think that our country and our our community benefits from taking a more fulsome view of our history and the figures that have contributed to where we are now.
Okay, thank you. Now, would would you support funding for free lunch and breakfast for all students? And for this one, Kathy, then Justin, then Julie, then Jean, and of course, why or why not? Would you support it?
Well, I think we saw during COVID the benefit of being able to provide breakfast and lunch for free, so I would be in favor. But I recognize that the district can't take on this financial responsibility alone, because it would add a couple million dollars to our budget every year. We did decide this year to use some of our food service funds to provide free breakfast to our students, all of our students. That's a couple hundred thousand dollars. So over the past few years, in my role as the Minnesota PTA Advocacy Commissioner, I've been advocating to the federal and state government for more funds that would allow our district and all districts to provide lunches free of charge, and that advocacy effort is ongoing, and I would welcome any community member to contact their federal legislators and their state legislators, especially with the nine billion dollar surplus that we have at the state of Minnesota, to be able to provide these free lunches to students.
Justin?
Thank you.
Yeah, free lunches, free breakfasts would be wonderful. The the only trouble is we have to figure out as a community how to pay for it and how to stack that up as a priority versus the the Legion, other things that the school district also needs to be able to align resources with. I I think it would be great, by the way, to not have fees for extracurricular activities, for sports, for music. But you know, that's kind of in the same category in the sense that it's it's necessary to figure out where those resources would come from in a budget that's already pretty tight.
Okay, thank you. And Julie?
First of all, students learn better when they're not hungry. I mean, any adult can think about, I am so hungry, I'm starving. They're not gonna be focusing on what's right in front of them, other than making dinner perhaps. One of the things that we haven't touched on yet is that the free and reduced lunch forms that that parents have previously filled out in order to qualify for free breakfast and free lunch also determine the amount of federal funding that we get in some of our schools, our title, our title dollars. So during the pandemic, people weren't filling out these free and reduced lunch forms because they were getting breakfast and lunch free. So that, we have to develop a different metric to be able to figure out how we can still qualify for these federal funds, even if we are supplying breakfast and lunch. And then currently, we have students or parents who are just above that cutoff line being able to have free lunch, but they're still struggling. You know, they're missing it by a little bit, but they are still struggling. So free breakfast and lunch would be beneficial to all of them.
Okay, and Jean?
Absolutely. And for all the reasons that the other three speakers have discussed, we should provide lunch and breakfast and lunch for our students. And I'm glad that Ms. Workman mentioned the free and reduced price lunch form that parents fill out, so that the district can get funding, special funding from the state and the federal government. That's really important to educating our kids. And if we can provide these meals for our students without charge, we need to figure out another way that we can still access that funding.
Thank you. I I believe we have time for one more question, and then we will be going to the 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 wrap-up time period. So at this point, we probably will not have an opportunity, if we've had anyone submit questions now, but what I would suggest at this point is that if you go to or I'm gonna ask all of the candidates here, if you would go to the In the City for Good Facebook page and put your contact information there, and then if anyone would like to reach out to you to ask more questions, they could use that contact information. So if that would work out, we we want to be sure that if people have an opportunity to ask you the questions that they'd like. But for now, we're going to take one more question, and this one is, how do you define what has been called as quote-unquote "the whole child approach to education," unquote? And do you support this in the classroom? Why or why not? Justin, we'll start with you, and then Jean, Kathy, and Julie. And again, how do you define the quote "whole child approach to education," unquote? And do you support this or not in the in the classroom, and why?
Well, I I think this is referring to meeting the the needs of the child in order to allow them to have what they need to be in an environment that's conducive to learning. So if the if the child needs additional services or additional resources, then then those ought to be provided so that they're able to participate in their classroom and and meet their academic potential.
Okay, and then Jean?
Absolutely. A whole child, if you just throw information at a child and expect it to stick, it doesn't work unless that child comes in ready to learn. And we know, science and psychology tell us absolutely that kids can't learn unless first they feel safe, they have their physical needs met, they have a sense of belonging, they have some self-esteem. You can talk all day long, and because of the adolescent brain, the the developing brain, it won't absorb that, it won't process that unless we care about all those other things going on in a child's life, phones ringing, I'm sorry.
All right.
It's it's an adolescent child. Who needs to get picked up? Sorry, I'll mute.
And Kathy?
Well, I think what should be exciting for the Rochester community to know is that that whole child approach of ensuring every child is healthy, safe, engaged, supported, and challenged is the backbone of our mission statement and our strategic plan. So healthy in our strategic plan is our social emotional learning strategies that we embed in our curriculum and our mental health supports. Safe in our strategic plan is focusing on students feeling safe and welcome and belonging in their schools. Engaged is our student-centered deeper learning, where we apply the core academic principles to real-world experiences. Supported is the family engagement and parent empowerment model we're going to develop to strengthen families' ability to support their students. And challenged is our multi-tiered systems of support, which makes sure all students receive a strong fundamental education, but those students who are struggling get specific additional supports. And if a student has mastered a subject, they're given additional resources to take them above mastery of the skills. I think the whole child approach to education dovetails exactly what we've developed in our strategic plan.
Thank you. And Julie?
Everything has been said really well so far. I would like to really touch on the whole notion of a sense of belonging and feeling that you matter. When kids feel that they matter, they're going to learn. When kids feel cared for by their teacher, they're going to learn. When kids have the supports, the academic, the emotional supports that they need, they're going to learn. Without those, it's going to be much, much more difficult. So we can say to that child who is experiencing trauma, we can pound reading, writing, and arithmetic into their brains, and I think it was Jean who said, it's just not going to stick. So a positive relationship in the schools is really, really important, and this is all outlined in the strategic plan. I think that Dr. Prakel has even come up with a two-sided snapshot of this plan, which is, makes it a little bit easier to to digest. But when we're talking about equity, that means giving every child what they need to succeed. When my youngest child broke his leg at the age of five, he had a, we got, we put a cast on him. I mean, we didn't. But we didn't insist that our other two children also had casts, because that's not what they needed.
Great, okay. Thank you very much. Now, we will give the candidates an opportunity to spend about a minute telling us summing up something here, telling us why you want us to vote for you. You have a minute to to wrap this up for yourself. The order that this is gonna be in will be Kathy, Jean, Justin, and Julie. So Kathy? And you have a minute to do this, too.
Well, thanks for the time and the questions to be able to share our perspectives. You know, I really believe that our students need passionate, prepared, and persistent school board leadership. I'm going to build on the skills and knowledge that I developed over the past four years. And I will continue to use my voice to champion schools where all students feel safe and supported and all educators and families feel respected. I'm going to use my votes to back up my words with programs and resources that drive student success. We need to elect leaders to the school board who listen when students tell us what they need to learn and when educators and families tell us what they need to teach and support students. We need school board members who use credible information and data. We advocate for opportunities and resources for everyone in our diverse school community and hold the district accountable to improve student academics. I will continue to be that school board member. I'm asking for your vote on November 8th for seat six. I appreciate your time tonight and thank you.
Thank you. And Jean?
And what I'm hoping more than anything else is that we can put the joy back in education. And I don't mean just fun, I mean joy. Where students have spent a couple of years listening to adults argue about who's right and who's wrong and what needs to happen. I want our schools to continue to progress so kids show up ready to learn, excited about learning. And knowing that they are going to be successful, knowing that there will be people in those buildings every single day who know them, who support them, who love them and will hang in there with them. I want every student to feel confident that their life matters, that they have a purpose, that they will graduate ready to face whatever comes at them. And that going to school is joyful. So, beyond all the science, all the statutes, everything else, I think that's one thing that our district embraces. I know our staff does, and I think we need to give them a chance to show students what that looks like and what that feels like. And thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Excuse me. Uh, Justin?
One of my favorite things that I do every day, um, every school day anyways, the seven minutes that I spend driving my seventh grader to school. Um, we talk about things going on in his class. We talk about, um, uh, a test that he's anxious about or, um, what's going on in his PE class, his friends, what the school environment is like. Um, and I cherish those minutes enough that it's, it's almost a running joke. I don't want anyone else to give him a ride in the morning because that's my time to get the lowdown on seventh grade at Kellogg. I've moved to Rochester five years ago and I've been involved in the community as a soccer coach, a baseball coach. Um, I'm on the executive committee of the Rochester branch of the NAACP and I serve on the Board of Directors of the Rochester Public School Foundation. I'd like to serve on the school board because I want our schools to be the best in the state. I care about it for my own kids, I care about it for your kids and I care about it for our community. I'll be intensely focused on reading proficiency by grade three. And I'll have a front row seat to see what's working and what isn't.
Time please, thank you.
Thank you. And, excuse me, and Julie?
I'm running for reelection to the Rochester School Board. Some people would say I'm crazy, but it's been a joy to be on the board and to be working for students, the ones who really need our full-time attention in order to be successful. Not that all students don't, but some students particularly so. So our top priorities are comprehensively outlined in the strategic plan, the three-year plan from 2022 through 2025. Planning for purpose, the school's climate and a school safety plan. When students know that they are cared for, when they feel that they belong. I believe as Dr. Marvin said, they will have joy in learning. They will want to do better and the adults will continue to support them so that they can do this. So some of the issues in the plans, um, uh, have, are a multi-tiered approach to academic achievement, to improving the safety and wellbeing, and most importantly, to monitor, how are we doing? Are these initiatives working for us or not? And how do we move forward after we have analyzed, um, the success of the plan that we have in front of us?
Thank you very much. Excuse me. And I'd like to thank
Excuse me, before you close off, a bit of housekeeping? We should, we should have emails for the candidates already. I know we need to make sure we have a correct one for Justin. But if we could do that, if we have them already, rather than going on our Facebook page and posting, I'll just add them to the comment section when we post the recorded video.
Okay.
So if we can get, make sure we have a good, uh, email for Justin, then that's what we'll, that's how we'll handle that.
Right.
Okay.
And you know what? We have about, we have just a, a couple of extra minutes. So perhaps each of you, if anyone, uh, uh, thank you for doing that, Dave. But maybe each of you can also just say your email address right now. Excuse me, if anybody has a pencil ready to take it down. So, uh, let's see, I'm looking, I'm going across at my screen now. So Julie, what would be the best email to reach you?
G double U followed by the number four, S B dot R P S at gmail dot com. Or they can go to my website, which is a lot easier, and that's JulieWorkman.org. And there's contact information there as well.
Okay, and Jean?
Mine is initial C, Jean, J E A N, Marvin, M A R V I N, at gmail dot com.
Okay, and Kathy?
Mine is Kathy with a C, C A T H Y, at KathyNathan, N A T H A N, dot com.
Okay, and Justin?
Justin at Justin M Cook dot com.
Okay, all right, so, great. Um, thank you. And thanks, Dave, for bringing that up. Um, and then we'd like to thank again all of the candidates who appeared tonight and all of you who, uh, submitted questions and those of you who have been listening through this. Um, we really appreciate your participation in all of these ways. Uh, we will be posting the video of the stream, um, and soon. We, you know, technology being what it is, I can't promise exactly the date, but Dave has been really good about getting these up. Um, and if you, again, if you have other questions, contact the candidates directly. Uh, come to our Facebook stream to look at this too. And, uh, we would like to give a little public service announcement because we have similar forums next week on the 12th and 13th for the mayoral and city council seats. And we encourage you to come. The details for that will be, uh, on our Facebook page, that including the Zoom links because those will also be, uh, live streamed and, and, uh, not in person. Uh, we thank you for your time. Be sure you vote in November. And you can vote already, it's time, you can do that. But, um, again, we appreciate this opportunity, uh, to be able to hear from each of you. So I hope you all have a good evening and we will, um, maybe see you in the, okay. Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry, I thought that was a question, Gerard, but I see that's a thumbs up, so thank you. Uh, we, uh, we maybe will see each other at, uh, the polls, so good night.